...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roach Hall? He's asking that there'll be virtual here in bed.
Brian House?
Here.
Alderman Cathy Birkin?
Here.
Approval of agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sure, check it. If you made a second, go on there. Send agenda, amend, bring through this meeting, trailer report, collector's report, bill for payment, city clerk, pay for these previously appropriated bills. Anybody have anything they want to go over or issues or needs amendments?
Adam, you have to have three people to vote.
Now, when I have an emergency and I already had a voice vote, so thank you for your input because I called MML and already before this.
Okay.
I know what you're saying, yes, you're right.
Yeah, two yes votes, votes and you need three.
Yeah, two majority and then also vote with Zen's vote, voice vote from phone accounts. Anyways, back to that, anybody have issue with the amendments and amendments up there? All right, anybody sign up for the forum? Oh, is there a person second? You have a motion for?
Make a motion to approve it.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
And Alderman Duda voted in A and I have it on my phone for record.
All right.
Public forum, anybody sign up, issues on the sign up sheet?
No.
That pertains to any agenda items, okay. All right, on this, we're gonna have to do the acceptance of Alderman Haggard resignation. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept Alderman Haggard's resignation.
Is there a second on that?
A second, yeah.
All right, under R S M O seven two eight zero, due to urgency, and there's not Zen's, Zen also approved of Rose's, I want to make the recommendation to the board for Rose, Ms. Rosenwig, to be willing to take a seat with consent approval of the board.
So, yes.
Yes, do you have a motion?
I'm making motion to accept.
Do I have a second to vote, go on there?
Aye.
And then Zen also voted yes on that one too. All right, Rose needs to be sworn in.
I'm Rose Rosenzweig.
I'm Rose Rosenzweig.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of the class.
The provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinance of the city.
And the ordinances of the city.
That I possess, the qualifications required for such office as specified in the laws of the United States of Missouri.
Okay, I'm Rose. That I possess, the qualifications required for said office as specified in the laws of the state of Missouri.
And that I will demean myself faithfully in said office.
And that I will demean myself faithfully in said office.
Welcome back, Rose. And then take this, have your key. Um, did we have the necessary? All right, got that done. Okay, unfinished business on this, I did bump up, just so you know, with the acceptance of Ms. Haggard's resignation, so we had three. So, as in the last work session, we talked about us, so meter reader, you know, and compensation per the board, you guys were all discussing that. So, Zen found somebody that would do it, but we need to see about creating that office or special appointment by the board instead of them monthly grade a compensation and when it will take effect. So, you guys got any consensus, want to discuss it?
Well, do we have a job description, do you need that or?
I mean, we can create a job description in meter readings, I mean, I've never found one in an ordinance that shows.
Just to back up a little bit with the city clerk, we had a meeting, of course, that has a lot to do with water bills and collections and the duties, you know, basically is, you know, reporting back to the board and turning in readings to the clerk. So, I suppose there's days and deadlines that need to be clarified, you know. So, for you, April, what is that, what are the days?
They have from the sixteenth to the twentieth to read the meters. Usually, we try to read it on the same day every month. It's usually about, what, the eighteenth?
So, anyways, we have the meters, we can read the meter between the sixteenth to the twentieth. Normally, we try to stay in a thirty day, one day period, sometimes it is thirty two days, just depending on whenever that date falls that we're trying to hit. And with, we kind of compensate for weather too, if we got no rain or snow coming in, if we need to do it beforehand or, you know, the day after or something with the rain and snow, we try to get it before, snow actually gets, so. But, other than that, I mean, that's, with that stuff there, should we send out? I mean, I guess with the bill or whatever we need to do, do that, or, you're talking about the, you're talking about the survey, right?
No, we're talking about the timing for reading the works.
Oh, timing, okay.
Time to read.
I thought you were reading or?
The clerk is defined six, the sixteenth to the twentieth, so that would be a four day period of time that we'd like to have the person read the meter. And then there's the equipment needed, you know, I understand we have a more modern way of reading it now, but is there two different ways to read the meter, is there manually and then?
Well, yeah, we have some that are manual read and then we have some that are wand read, which I get the tablet ready and usually have it sitting out for them to read on the day that they're supposed to read it, so.
So, we should have a kind of a training period for this person when they come in their first month?
Yeah.
And then talk to them about responsibility with two different types of readings, one with a wand and one manually.
But, the question is, or my question is, why are we hiring somebody when Coney, he's a part-time person, he can read them?
I think that what we talked about last month was the fact that we wanted to have somebody specifically to do it.
Just for that?
In case he has something else to do.
I, I was, that's a good question.
Yeah, and that doesn't spread everybody, Ben, and you know every month you're gonna get your readings and that's it, that's the duty of that person.
Okay, I was just asking about that.
Yeah, sure, but no way to deflect from his responsibility to work that he does. So, that, so we have the timing and then we have the job, you know, task itself and we need to, and task training. And then that, the procedure for turning those things over and then, of course, there's the pay rate. And, and in the old days?
Now, when citizens electric, we used to read the meters, they'd come out and, because I had dogs, they would use binoculars and get it and write it down and everything, then they changed it so I don't have to come up and read the meters, it feeds right into their office. So, why, why can't we get a hold of that technology and use that, then we don't have to send anybody out?
Because it's two point one million dollars.
Two point one million?
Yes. And we're not a Fortune five hundred companies, we've already looked at the status of it.
It's just.
That's what they spend, that's two point one, we looked into that.
I mean, it pipes through the cable system.
It's built by, yes, Bluetooth or Wi-Fi, they read the meters.
But you've got to change all those meters for them to be read virtually, like, like that.
So, everybody would have to have new meter and then new software, then you have to pay for the software and then you got the cost of installation on the vehicle or ear or the repeater.
Okay, it's just.
I understand where your concept is.
They're thinking, you know, they can do it, we can't, we, and, but it's not cost effective, is what you're saying.
No, not at this time enough for us, because, I mean, they charge me three hundred dollars for my electric, so I'm sure they'd do it quite well, so.
So, in the description we had left, we, of course, the pay rate we're gonna talk to, but really the compensation package, and that is, does this person use their own automobile and just pay their own gas and just get paid a flat rate that we pay them and they use their money to pay their gas, is that what we're gonna do?
Is that, I think we just touched on that, I mean, typically, Frank, once they get going, how long does it take them to read meters? About four or five hours?
So, if everything goes good, it takes about three hours or, that's moving, I mean, it's, I mean, with me showing somebody where all the meters are at and all that, it normally takes about five hour, five to six hours, that's, you know, pinpoint every meter, making sure they know where they're at or whatever, but with me, I can probably knock them out in about three hours.
Sure.
You know, that's nonstop.
So, to smooth things out, it might be better to put a, I'm just suggesting, that we put together a seller package that just says, okay, this is what you're gonna get paid, you're gonna buy your own gas and, you know, furnish your own automobile, and this is the rate that you're gonna deal with, and that way we don't have calls for paying for gas or mileage or repairs of cars and stuff like that. I think in the past, we've had employee use their own car, but we had a gene did a fine job for quite a few years and it's paid a flat rate every month.
The other question is, can we go into closed session and talk about this, because I have a few things I'd like to say, you know, not public wise, as long as I'm married, you gotta be okay with that.
No, can't, can't do it.
So, so outside of finding the right person?
Can't.
It was personnel.
Hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting, you're not talking about a specific person.
Yes, I have their name, but I'm not disclosing it at this time though.
Okay.
We're talking about the position really, and we wanted to identify if anybody interested in a position last month, we said, okay, we need to talk to the community, it could be an ex-teacher or somebody that's working here that only needs a very small, you'll pick up some extra bucks for working for the board department. And, but we didn't define the period of time that the reading should be read, we didn't define the job task and training and the compensation, and those were the three things that were left over, I think. So, should one of us write that up for, after we have the closed session?
I think we should do that, and also with Darren closed session, that'd be litigation purposes if something were to happen to that said person, like, you know, get hurt or bust something or break something too. So, because, you know, is the reason pockets are gonna come out of ours? So, I mean, if you disagree, I mean, I think we need to go a little bit further into it, there's a little bit, you know what I'm saying?
Well, as far as their insurance, you mean?
No, like, our wand and the equipment, if you say they fall in a hole.
Oh, yeah.
Working for us.
Are they responsible for it or are they responsible?
You see, you need that litigation, and that's an issue there too, you know. Or they break that thousand dollar wand, but they just about, it isn't, yeah.
They cheat.
Then we have to file, and they're already, so we're gonna be bad too, it's.
Is that something we could bond or anything?
We may be able to, I may check that with the city attorney, that's why, when Frank brought that up, I mean, we can try to call the city attorney and ask him, they're in closed session, definitely what it is.
I think that's why they don't have that type of thing.
Yeah.
We can put that down there too.
I mean, with the cost of that equipment, it should be covering the city insurance.
Should be, but would it be considered a employee or subcontractor, that's where your fine line is where insurance company?
When the equipment gets broken, I mean, the city's still owning, so if it's over a certain amount of cost, it should, insurance pick that up, if it was, you know, an act of accident, you know, an act of God, or, you know.
Or they crash their car and something like that, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
That's another thing.
In most cases, Frank, just, sorry, gentleman, I didn't say, is the equipment up and working?
Well, I know this past month, we had an agreement, we had a little technical error with the wand, that wand is getting older, I mean, it's a newer wand, but it is getting older. Actually, the whole software, you know, from the time we started doing this was in 2011, whenever we had this equipment, which one of our gun, our auto guns went to crap. Anyways, then our monitor, our, well, our pad, it went to crap, and then we had to switch over to a tablet with a new software to do these senses. Now, the senses are starting to get over that age of, you know, being in the ground, I mean, they recommend, you know, to, you know, replace them, you know, to upgrade, like, I think it's every twenty year. Anyways, I'm, so, I mean, the equipment's getting older, I mean, it is, and so, and it's just, it's, it's so expensive, I mean, because it's an essential, I mean, we gotta have it, that's what, you know, unless we go back to manual reading, then manual reading is not the key anymore, I mean, because you gotta pump out pitch, you gotta get down the ground, you know, you gotta, stuff like that, I mean, no big deal getting on the ground, but it's just, it's the cost of it, you know, and the software too, it's like, oh, every, I think every year we gotta update the software set too, and then the cost of attack, coming down or talking to them on the phone, sending it to them, so.
But outside of keeping it updated and keeping it in good repair, the equipment's working right now, we have, it's an ongoing thing that we need to do.
It's, it's working right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, I know the other day we had a flaw with the auto gun, it went blank on, couldn't figure, you know, like, figure out what's going on with it and finally came back on, I don't know if it's because of the subzero temps outside and walking around, or they got cold, too cold, I mean, my cell phone gets too hot, it just shut down, so.
We use it twelve times a year, so, so far, we have quick, the equipment that we use and the updating of equipment, we'll talk in meeting about bond issue with insurance, and then the timing of the work, the sixteenth to the twentieth, the job task itself, the training, pay rate, compensation package, that would be the core thing. So, that's what I have here for bullet points that be discussed later on tonight or at the next meeting. Is anybody able to add to that for this particular position, meter reader person?
I would, I would, that's good.
And that was due to, I'm sorry.
I what?
Yes, we just stated that they need to, they agree with it.
Very good, very good. So, but anyways, and we've answered the question about why we have a designated person, it's supposed to help you.
Yeah, no, I was just asking you a question.
We know in the past that you've been called out to do it so that you could.
On the one.
So you could do your bills, we don't want that to happen very often.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and folks, I got my, I'll press down.
All right, so we're good on the meter, part right there, everybody doing that. All right, this was one to help April to do a lot of things, what it goes into this. Mayor of Boarder, appoint members over to Office of Building Inspector Improvements and Fee Schedule, because we need to get that under control, you know.
Do we, do we have a person now that's up?
We don't, we have, we don't, well, April does it, but we, we have where there is a slot for office for building inspector or site, because, I mean, if she can't get, like, the problem we have right now, one of them.
Is that something that a board member could do or?
Yeah, I mean, I could say to him, and that's, but, you know, I would say it's an issue that, and I would see an issue, it just can't be compensated more than what five hundred, yeah, more than five hundred for situation.
If there's compensation involved.
Yes.
We've got a qualified person setting gear at the table, I would think, with you Kathy, because of the, I mean, not to put it in your life.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
We definitely know what our arrangements.
Right, exactly, and you're familiar with, of that to be done and what needs to be looked at.
The only problem I can see is that I will still be working full time, if somebody need me during the day, I could not do it, I'd have to do it after I got home after work.
I think we can schedule now, we scheduled.
Yeah.
You should schedule anyways, and then what's the fee for that?
Twenty five.
Twenty five?
Yeah.
You know, we had, we had in the past, a couple of episodes that happened, probably shouldn't bring this up, but it could happen, is that we had a family get here, they bought the house, and we couldn't, for some reason, get the inspection done there in front of the house with their furniture and five children, and they're waiting to move in the house, it's a house that really would have passed like that, but we didn't have anybody here at all that could do it for a day or two, which is weird, I mean, unusual, so, there needs to be some type of sense of urgency, you know, you know, knowing when they're coming and when they, but that would be something that would be talked about with the person and the owner of the house, right?
Yeah.
So that would be worked out.
Isn't there a time limit or a time that they need to bring that to our attention, that they are, someone is moving in, those kinds of things, and it just can't be, you know, sure?
Yeah, it has to be, we have to inspect it before they can move in.
Right.
So, we do, they have to let us know before, say, hey, I have two weeks to move in, what timeframe do you have within these two weeks that you can come and inspect?
It's just like any other inspection, your insurance company coming out or anybody else, they're all gonna kind of make a schedule to come out.
Right.
And, you know, gotta schedule that with them, so, but we have to have a person, the mayor's saying, to designate that duty too, in other words, we've got this place, do they have to go to the board to get that done, or can they just contact the person directly and say, I need a home inspection?
They would need to contact the office here, put a checklist, and they'd have to pay that fee.
Yeah.
To me and Kathy both have done with all their rounds and stuff, and, you know, and then we set up the time that works for both parties.
Yeah.
And then it'll do it.
So, it would go through the collector?
Yeah, the papers are in there for the bill and everything, because there's different deposit amounts with renders versus.
But I've got a question. If there is a designated person or the building inspector, why would they have to go to the collector to set up the appointment if that person is the?
Do you want them to?
Well, no, but I'm, but I'm just saying, I mean, how do I know when that person's scheduled, what that person's schedule is like?
I'm saying, you can't get to it, this would be a better.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's what that would, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, you want me as a backup then?
Yeah.
Got it, got it, got it, okay.
Unless you didn't, don't like that, I mean.
No, 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 I get, I'm a helper, I like to help people.
Yeah, I'll put a whole way.
I think I'm a backup.
So, basically, you're, this person is a backup person, if I can't get to it right when I can have somebody else go do it, okay.
Hey Kathy, at this point in time, can you do this, or? That kind of takes some of that off, do you try and crunch?
Yeah.
Does that mean, I don't, we don't have any?
It makes sense, I get it.
So, I mean, it's totally up to the board and what you guys, I mean, Kathy, do you feel like doing the backup?
I would love to help, I don't mind at all.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind at all.
All right, so.
It's all intended to find the duties for the collector and the clerk, and we had a long discussion about that in our first meeting, so this will be helpful, to know who's a good to person.
Yeah.
I'm not helping at all.
So, I mean, I'm gonna appoint Kathy as Assistant Building Inspector, that's what pertains to the Office of that, that's in our ordinance, and to follow permitting and fee schedules. And I'm guessing you can show her, you know? Anybody got any reviews or want any issues with that, or, I just think it's better, I mean, it takes a little bit of work, but, you know, the more we can take pressure off, I think, the more this will be more fluid.
For her.
You know what I'm saying, so.
And just for the record, I will not expect no places.
Yes, that's my line.
Or not.
So, all right, moving on, delinquent water accounts, when you, and shut off review for water, there's a total amount due, services rendered, there should be a sheet in here.
It's somewhere. Oh, it's in the last packet, it's in the very last packet, I'm lost.
Is it?
Um, yep.
So, right now, these are current delinquent bills.
Within this month?
Yeah, number one twenty seven, that's been waiting for me.
Yeah, that person is deceased, so.
Yeah.
That's gonna have to probably go to.
I don't know.
My great brother's number maybe works somehow with him on that.
Um, one sixty eight, we talked about that last time.
Yeah.
I don't think that the brothers should have to pay that if somebody else is, somebody else.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I agree with that too.
It's too. Um, one eighty nine is on payment range, yes. Kathy, I knew you were on vacation, so three fifty nine, the very last one. And why are you on vacation?
I got answered, it would have been fine, but yep, I will get on that.
Um, three eleven, he's, yeah.
That one's probably gonna have to go.
I'll have to. Two fifty six, I don't know, do you have that one?
That one has to be a deposit book.
Uh, two forty six is no one from town, I have no idea how to get a hold of him.
Two, uh, forty six?
Yeah.
Is that for that house up there?
Yes.
So, on these, we can send them in to the city attorney for collection for garnishment. That would, would he can, they can locate the garnisher wages if we have to.
That will be just like one to two days.
So, um, that's several on here, like, two thirty six. And. What is that?
Three forty three.
Three forty three, and then three forty three. I mean, that's, that's within our control there too.
So, they're currently still getting water, but their, your balance is growing.
It is, I mean, they're paying on it, but.
That's keep it down, it just keeps going up, huh?
Yes.
Well, the thing about it is, you know, the thing that I did is on some of these that I've seen already, that they're only paying like twenty dollars extra for one vehicle, so, you're not gaining nothing.
Yeah.
I know there's a few on there that are very outstanding, or, well, actually, three of them, I think it is on there, that's very outstanding, personally myself, which would be, let's see here, um, one forty four, I mean, after it gets past, you know, two hundred dollars, I mean, in my opinion, that starts being outstanding.
I learned this case after thirty days.
One of that.
After thirty days, you're going away, it's automatic.
I know, uh, there's a few of them, one here that, you know, three forty three, I mean, we've been, you know, had a leak, I do know that, we're paying twenty dollars each time we pay our bill, which our bill's gonna be a lot higher and stuff, you know, throughout, whenever I was kind of figuring this out the other day, whenever the mayor kind of talked to me about it and Duda was talking to me about it, I mean, I mean, you give them enough time, I mean, for a whole year, I mean, at the end of that year, and you balance, you're looking at, you know, a loss on our water side and our shooter, because, you know, you're going back in the red and the black. Technically, myself, you give them a year, anyways, personally myself, like tomorrow, you know, clerk, whatever, call, call them all tomorrow morning, be like, hey, look, this is what you're gonna have to do, I mean, like, the ones that's, you know, three forty three and then, uh, where's that other? Let's see, three forty three and then I'm, uh, two thirty six, um, and. let's see, three forty-three, and then I'm, uh, two thirty-six, um, and one forty-four, and then there's, um, one seventy-nine. I mean, personally, myself, uh, if you got a, you know, a car payment or something, you know, and you're delinquent on that, I mean, you're getting your car taken away or whatever, but, uh, there's no issues about it, but the thing that it is, is I think personally, myself, I would give them a heads up, that, hey, I know you need to pay at least half of this off by tomorrow, or, you know, by Friday, you know, tomorrow. If they answer, you know, pay half of it off, if not, we're shutting you off Friday, you know, so... And personally, myself, I mean, I'm, uh, when you go delinquent like that, I mean, personally, I mean, I know you're trying, I know people, you know, don't have a lot of money with a couple of them that I see here, but it's, the point of that it is, it's twenty dollars, it's gonna get you nowhere, I mean...
Right, but there's our policy though, that thirty days or longer, you're going to the period, so it's just collectible. It's just collectible after thirty days. The other thing is, that's what credit cards are for, and that's what banks are for, but the city of Saint Mary is not a bank, and it's not a credit card, and we owe it to the other people in this town to collect the money and pay our bills, because we have to pay for the water.
Yes.
So, I hear what you're saying, it's all collectible.
It is.
Now...
Mine is a few that are, you know, deceased or delinquent in there, but yes, most of it's collectible. I mean, it's answered episode when we do our water rate study.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, some of these bills, you know, looking at them and stuff, I mean, a payment arrangement ain't, you know, personally, in my opinion, the customers' opportunities at payment, or you give a payment arrangement, anyway, if they can't agree to it, you know, ask them if they agree to it. I mean, if they can pay two hundred dollars a month extra, you know, with a payment arrangement, okay, but, you know, twenty dollars, I mean, they're gonna keep paying twenty dollars, but their bills are gonna keep falling, so...
Many of these have payment arrangements where it's gonna be paid off, I mean, I could see somebody coming to the board and saying, I had a leak, and my leak ran me six hundred dollars this month, and like, I'm paying my regular water bill, but the six hundred's gonna kill me. Can I take two months to pay this off? It's kind of the same as cash, and make that really out, the board wants to approve that and do that, I can see that we can be flexible like that. So, it was a regular water bill that's just coming in every month, like every mother, mother-in-law, you know, the families that live here, they pay their bills, everyone else to pay their bill.
Yeah, and I mean, and the other thing issue is like, one this year, figuring it all up, uh, I think it, uh, well, actually, it's a lot higher now than what I figured it up, but, um, my thing about it is, is with the cost of that, I mean, between, you know, split down between the water and sewer, I mean, there's funds there that could be paid for something, but we don't have to pay for it. And anyways, so, you're taking the community, the rest of the communities have to, you know, hear of a version, and then...
And how do we fix it, what else do we use money for for the water department? But, uh, as far as these, have any of these that are on here that are delinquent been negotiated like that? Where people have come in and said, can you help me out here and work out a payment plan?
Some of them have, but not, not the other, not the bigger ones.
Yeah.
That's why I could borrow this from another town, if we need to have inked the paper. Verbal cannot work.
Yeah, so now it's a matter of going ahead and contacting these people and saying you don't have an arrangement and payments due, and if you do have an arrangement...
Yeah, this, this is, like I said, broke down from there, because then if you have all their information and, you know, what they should do when they default, it's automatically shut off again. You know? Every other town does it, like, and like Zen, we're not a credit card, we can't keep floating this. Now, a twenty percent increase to rates we've had with the past administration, we can't do that.
I think this is a good deal.
And one person, I mean, if they do this, and they put money down, then they're, they are more difficult to pay. And if you shut them off, the answer happy, they're gonna get paid. But we have to enforce the order, and it says by thirty days, zip, yeah. I mean, so...
So, I know, like, with other, a couple of other towns close by here, what we do is, you know, what they do, now, just in talking to them, you know, they go, like, the first month, okay, now, if they got a extreme high water bill, you know, a lot of times, customers come to talk to the administration or whatever, to try to adjust it or whatever they need to do, but on a lot of them, if we know that they're gonna be delinquent, you know, say, that first month, that second month, we give them, you know, give them the chance to, um, you know, repay the bill, and a lot of times, I know, like, up there at work, they'll tell them, okay, if you pay the whole bill, we'll waiver the reconnection fee. Anyway, but if they don't, they make a payment arrangement to pay partial, they pay partial once. If that payment arrangement don't happen within the days they say, like, next Friday, I can pay, you know, this much. If it don't happen, I'm going out, and we're done. I mean, we don't, we ain't taking that ability on that on what it is. I mean, it's, and like I said, it's taking a burden on the city itself, and taking a burden on the other customers, because we're trying to keep the water rates where, and it's hard to do whenever you have this much sticking out there on the limb, so...
We do, they have two six-two and two thirty-six are one the same, and they pull their money to their residents.
So, is this something that's just mailed out?
No, this is what they fill out, the payment's right here, and that has to be free upon.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to come in and sign it.
That way, they can't say, well, I'm just gonna use April as an example, April said I could do this, or April said this.
Right, it didn't value.
It's right here, like, it ain't everything, but...
Right.
Well, I would have to say that for a city our size, we don't really have that many people doing it, but what we have is big.
So, is there a minimum that they can pay, or is it something that, who agrees on it? It says, yeah, you know, twenty dollars, you wanna do twenty dollars every week or whatever. Is there a minimum that they needed to pay, or is it just by individual cases?
I would do individual cases, if you had different sums of money, you know, like, some of them are over a thousand sum or this, and I would say we'd agree on a percentage or something to make that and adopt that, you know, whereas not...
That's a good question. Because some people owe, say, two hundred, some people owe...
Do that, right.
Yeah, so...
You know.
Yeah, and this is for the future too, not just, not just, I just don't want her to be in the middle where they come in to pay and say, well, I'm only gonna give you twenty dollars this month, and, you know.
Right.
So, there needs to be something that's a minimum that they need to be able to pay.
Personally, personally, myself, I think that there should be on that paper, whatever, so, whatever you take the bill as, I think you should turn around and take a percentage of that bill, and actually say, this is what you're gonna pay. And it could be individually, but take that percentage, I mean, just like bank telling you that you're gonna pay interest, this is much, how much interest you're gonna pay on that payment. That's what I think should happen here, so...
And then the...
That's fair, then, you know, the minimum would be for, that's why I asked, would be individually for, you know, with the, with the percentage, or is it just a flat rate minimum?
And when it's billed, we, you keep up with your current bill that comes in, plus that amount comes on that bill that month too, so that we know when the bills come out each month, that this is gonna be added to that bill.
Plus the ten percent interest, or balance to city to cities that are coming to the, you know, we're floating you, so, like, Frank, we're gonna show our new interest on it.
April, is that something I can do with your equipment or a bill, where you can...
Since we switched the new software, I have to, I have to call out that one and see.
We can put the current bill in there, and then if we make it on here, and say, you've got two hundred dollars to pay for the next three months, if you...
Yeah, I have to, I have to call and see how I can add that on with the new billing software.
Yeah. Well, that sounds good, if we can do that, that'd be great. And once this is done, it's in our computer, and we can collect.
Yeah.
And then, once it's, if it's delinquent after that, then it's turned the leak monitor off.
That's amazing.
So, that would be the process of the policy.
And that follows also our ordinance on the policy in there. For disconnect.
So, April, you handle this, and should the water collector?
So, we agreed that it's going to be an individual case?
I think we can set a rate, I mean, or a percentage, the board can adopt a percentage or whatever. So, she'll have to keep calling all of us if we wanna do not much, I mean, that is case by case, like you said.
Yeah, I would say, well, I think she, Rose has got an idea, but what we can do is say, it's, you have to pay a third of this bill each month for the next three months, regardless if it's two hundred dollars you owe or a thousand dollars you owe. That's that minimum, it's the percentage that you pay. So, instead of saying, no, you pay twenty dollars and you pay fifty, no, you pay one-third that's owed each month for the next three months until it's paid off. So, the, oh, your regular water bill is one hundred dollars, and your payoff amount was, say, six hundred, and you have to pay two hundred, all of that one hundred. Next month, it's the same thing, the same thing until it's paid off.
Yeah.
So, I think we should agree on the percentage, at least that's the way I feel about it.
So, so change that to...
Well, yeah, because, uh, we shouldn't do anything over ninety days, I don't think.
No, I guess, I mean, you can, but this one, I mean, it was from another town, they...
Yeah.
They had ten months, and that's water and sewer, but that was all utilities, those were for larger accounts, so, like, several thousands of dollars, you know.
I do like the third.
But that can be amended.
Because most of this is doable. So, my next question too is Zen, what happens if we have this, where they agree to pay one-third of, and on each over the next two months? What happens if the next month comes, they are behind on that bill again?
That's when they get shut off.
They get shut off, it's in there.
And then they have to pay before you get it turned back on?
They have to pay your full plus the interest and the reconnection fee. I think that's fair, because it's a payment for floating.
April, if you could get that into our software, boy, that would be so much help. Get this filled out properly, get it down for ninety days, and then that percentage, get her to be able to put it on her bill, then we don't worry about it anymore. And it doesn't come in, it's due that month, it doesn't come in, you put a notice in to Frank that it gets turned off and...
Should that be added too, though, I mean, so that it's black and white interface? If you come in the next month, or you're late on any of the other ones, um, it's shut off, then you have to pay for, you know what I'm saying? So, they can't come back, because you didn't know.
And needs to be tweaked a little bit, just to test.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna help tweak it, please help.
Okay.
Kathy, do you want to tweak?
I'm tweaking right now.
Okay. So, the one that you've clocked, not numbered, but the payment agreement dates, the ninety days.
Yeah, oh, I remember.
Yeah, right, the policy of...
Are you keeping the two hundred dollar reconnect charge?
Oh...
If it's off more than fifteen days...
Yes.
You're talking about the deposit?
No.
Well, if you're...
Instead of charging the regular rate, if you get cut off within fifteen days and you don't get it turned back on that quick, then they charge you two hundred dollars to reconnect.
It's actually three.
It's actually three hundred.
Three hundred, okay.
I don't see much of anything wrong with that policy, and we can just stay that way.
I mean, if they're off on fifteen days, I charge you the three hundred dollars, you can actually be, I mean, that's everybody in town.
That's God City does it, and okay, I mean, there's several, even Morley does it, and they're, we all, in their senses, about one people. So, I mean, I see it as, we're providing a service, and I know it's high, we're working on that, but also, we have maintenance and upkeep if you don't want to. And if you look at the outstanding balance here, like Frank pointed out, that, that could fix a lot of stuff, I mean, as a deficit, we just keep rolling over and over and over. I don't think we need to keep floating all of this, sometimes it's gonna have to go to collections, so...
Personally, myself, when, like I said, I don't do bills or whatever, the one that's outstanding, as in, you know, the one that's been over a year, we need to make contact, and if they don't pay this, like, been over a year, or give them thirty days or a year or something, if they don't...
I'm saying, what I think you were saying.
They are...
Yeah.
Six...
Yeah, right, okay.
Absolutely.
We gotta cut them off, I mean, we're, we're losing, I mean, we're a tremendous...
I would say, well, how many of these people don't live in the hunt, well, I know that one has, that one has, that one has. That one's a collection.
And I can tell you, one of them, that's wondering right now, yeah, gonna get that.
Yeah.
Oh, one's dead, I mean.
Right there. He's been listed open today.
Who?
One of them working.
Then...
Well, then he can be shut off too.
Yeah, because there's, yeah, anyhow. I'd say, these, some of these have already done, either they come down, make a payment arrangement, or first they get shut off. When's the next, what do you think? If some of these don't...
Well, personally, a lot of them, I mean, since we're talking about it now, and it'd be out there, and hopefully, April here can get a whole load of people and tell them, hey, look, this is what it's gonna be, the twenty-first of next month, if you ain't got it wrapped up or, or you at least got a payment arrangement in, in place on paperwork, I mean...
So, you want to give it another thirty days?
That's my concern there too, because like I said, if you're gonna give it until next March, I mean, March twenty-first, look at all that time now that's built up, from then, a whole month, in that time, and that's just money that's gonna keep rolling over.
Month will start now.
I mean, that's your choice, I mean, she can make phone calls tomorrow, Friday, I can start cutting.
It's not that many people.
No, I think, well, some of you won't be able to hold it, if they're beyond, but, I mean, um...
Or they can't hold it.
If they ignore it, she tried. I mean, so, at this point, I think, it's up to you, but my consensus is, you know, some of these, you know, they're, they're just, they're abusing it. I pay mine as high sometimes, sometimes not so much, you know, the lease. Same with Frank, he might as well stick with the lease, you know, same thing, you know, but I think, if we try calling and say, you got to the first of March, they either make payment arrangements, or pay this off, you're shut off, you're done, I mean, does it, do we keep giving them time and keep accumulating, you know, and then you got two on here that are married with outstanding bills to the city.
And this is our second month, or the third month of discussing this, so...
Yeah.
But Kathy, can you work this out by the...
I'm on it, temporary, I'm on it, I'm on it.
I say, Kathy, if you wanna come down and help, you can...
And then Frank can get a list, the shut offs, and just go to, to it, and do it, and one forty-four, you might as well just do what you had there.
Well, I mean, if you can get me, I, like I said, Fridays are my time to talk.
Okay, I'll get two.
I heard that, and if it's done on Fridays, you know, because there's, there's... There's...
One, two, three.
She, one, two, one, two. She made a payment last month, but she wrote it out to the wrong person, so I had to send the jet back. So, that's why I'm like...
Yes, that was a error.
So, anyways, there's, I think there's about eight of them on here that do not have ears to lock them out, so, we'll probably have to get some in those cages. But the other thing is, if they go on temper with it, that's when they're retake their body on that.
Fine arrest, and they tear that and strike the sick property. Rest of the charge, um, so, it's up to you guys, what you wanna do. I just see it as a deficit, and we keep just giving them more reach, and they're just gonna take it, you know.
It's like the issue of civil...
I think it's a great idea, we'll get this tweaked, we'll get it typed up, we'll get it going.
All right, so, all right, we're all consensus of that, then, divided and voted on that, or just gonna disagree? All right. Okay, sorry to spend time on that, because like I said, this was from another town, and I spoke with, like, all around, see, everybody else is doing it, with inflation, and, yeah, all this other going on, so...
Maybe we should go on this.
Do you wanna go on?
I think a motion that we accept, no, it's not getting completed, though.
Yeah, it's not really, yeah, it's not really a...
Well, then we start this one.
We can make a resolution, I guess, right?
I don't have the resolution.
Never, okay. So, what we'll do is we'll just, we can just adopt it, I mean...
Yeah.
We'll just adopt it and add it to the waterworks ordinance.
And then it starts this month, that's like, it's the main thing.
Okay. And then, previous ones, we can change and tweak it from there, so... All right.
Okay, a task completed.
Oh, okay, all right. Do that, let me put that on there. Okay, uh, and Brian on administration, how's things going with that?
Well, can I report on it along with our clerk?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, Zen wanted me to do that.
Well, since we had, uh, our last month, we talked about, uh, the duties of the clerk and the duties of the collector, and, um, you know, there's a lot of stuff jamming into one job description here, and before, you know, we had a clerk and the collector and, um, um and they both had some hours they worked every week to get it done. So I had a great meeting with April, at least an hour long, and we discussed everything, the process here, when the collections are coming in, when the bills go out, and what date she needs to set. And I listened to what she had to say and asked her to, to please write down on a month, uh what her work was here. Because as a city clerk, she's responsible for everything. When we're not here, she's the clerk and that she's supposed to be here. So when people walk in here and they say, there's no clerk, you know, what's going on here? So we need to keep her in the office and we need to keep her working on what she needs to do. Collections and payments and uh and, and the duties as a clerk. So I asked her to write down her schedule on this calendar here for two months in a row so we can understand how important, how important uh her week or her month is, so that we know that on these particular days, she's doing particular things. So that's the day if we, if we see, if we see that uh we need something extra done, for example, or we need to call somebody to discuss something with her, we need to check with the clerk because she might be busy that day collecting water bills. She might be busy that day putting bills out. So she pretty much scheduled one here for everybody to see, when her bills go out each month, when she collects each month.
Sorry, my hand.
When her water bills, when her, when her payments go out. So that we could better, you got your.
Yeah.
So if you don't mind, April, if you could go over real quickly for us, your February and your March.
Well, usually, I mean, if you actually look at it, since the days are the same in February and March. Like the first Tuesday usually, that's a day that is kinda like a, I mean, I collect water payments if they come in and get water payments. The fifth, it says paperwork for loggers payment. I have got other, I got paperwork that I have to submit for loggers. Um I gotta go on and figure out the payments for that and transfer money around for all of it and then.
So what's your, what's your hours of operation on that Wednesday?
Um, seven thirty to three.
Okay, so let's start going ahead and put these hours down there. So she's here seven thirty AM. So when the, she's still got an office to run. People are coming to the window, people are coming to the door. You've got these duties to do. And um, but you're here seven thirty to three thirty. This is gonna be posted for everybody in town to know. You need to get something done with April on Wednesday, you can come between seven thirty and three o'clock. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Um and usually on Thursdays, I run the water sample or the sewer samples down to um Jackson. We have had in the past a problem with the mailing system. That's why I have been writing them down every, every week. Um, it was becoming to where they were not getting our samples on time and it was starting to dock us on our sample time through the mail. So we didn't wanna get, start getting docked on, you know, all of our, our, our samples. So that's why I started taking them down. Um, and then when I get back, um I, I finished my other monthly paperwork that I have to do, cause all my paperwork basically for like um my loggers, my um federal, my E, EF, what is it? EF, TPS. Um, everything's a month behind on, when I file everything. So everything's a month behind. Um, and then on Fridays.
Let's go, let's go back to Thursday. What are your office hours on Thursday?
Well, I'm gonna start saying I'll be from seven thirty to four.
Seven thirty to four PM. Now, when I talked to April about this, I thought that would be just for us all to understand this, she's the one that's having to collect, she's the one that's having to make a schedule to be here for people, because the most important thing is the clerk is in this office when somebody comes here. The collector's in the office when somebody comes here. So if we say it's seven thirty to three PM, then you need to be here. On Thursday, it's seven thirty to four PM, you need to be here. Running a sample to Jackson is something we probably shouldn't be doing between seven thirty and four. So is that's.
But my, my thing is, am I supposed to do city work on my time off?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, this is, this is what we need to discuss because what the, what the citizen expects is for you to be here. Now, are we gonna explain that you've gotta run samples on your time off? No, you know, we're just trying to make a schedule where we have you here when people want, expect you to be here.
So what time will they accept, or can you go down to the earlys to go down and drop out?
Well, usually on Thursday, I leave here at seven thirty. I head down there and then I come back.
Okay, so then your office hours would technically be, you would be in here at seven thirty, but you would still be doing city business?
Yes.
So um how long do you think it would be that you'd run down and get back? I mean, don't like say, oh, I ran that over there. Yeah, I'm saying like, don't.
A good question.
You wanna give yourself ample time to get down.
Well, I'm usually back by nine thirty, nine, nine thirty.
So what she's saying is, is then on our schedule out by the door, then you should say you're eight thirty to four. Because that's when you're here and people expect that. Like I said, when people come in here, there's no clerk. It's like, where's the clerk? It says on the door, there's supposed to be a clerk. So this is helping to fine tune that. So if you get here at seven thirty and you run those samples down and you get back by nine?
Unless I go like um if the, if the water bills are due on like a Wednesday, I'll do the deposit or I'll do the, you know, put in all the things, figure out my deposits and then usually on Thursdays, when I come back, I swing through, drop, go to the bank, do the deposit and then I come back here.
So what would be a safe assumption time that you could say, I'm back here in the office and now I'm ready for the start of the day here. So what would be that safe time that you could say? Would it be nine thirty, considering we have to go to the bank?
Yeah, uh about nine thirty.
Okay, so either way, be either if you, if you just went down and did the um the samples, or if you had to go to the bank, it would be a safe assumption that you could be back here by nine thirty?
Yeah.
So nine thirty to four PM.
What kind of weather is giving some of your problems with EPA?
USPS.
The, the, oh, through the mail, yeah, through the mail. Well, could we get, I mean, like USPS?
FedEx Express?
That's what I'm saying. Could we just have to make them sweet, like you got it?
Or UPS Express, I mean, that's what we, Frank, you have one of the sample timer on there.
So I.
Was from that out first.
Well, I'm sorry, there was a lot here.
I have to talk to Danny, I think she's out of office. I tried to call uh yesterday and today. I wonder if I was, uh after my lunch break. Um, to try to touch base with her real quick. Um, she didn't return the phone call yet. So I don't know if she's out of the office or, or if left since down there or do, but anyways, our TSS, which is our uh total suspended solids on our mixed liquor, that's not a time, it's time, but it's not a time frame. Anyways, our BOD samples and our ammonia and our oil and grease are on a time basis. So they have to stay twenty degrees Celsius and they have to be within five days. Anyways, for, you know, the, the sample, you gotta be there and they gotta be able to test or to put it, the sample on for five days.
And that's what's happening right now. We already have that set up.
Well, anyway, what was going on is we're on a quarterly basis. So every three months, I have to take a big sample, the big samples. Um, that's oil, grease, ammonia, uh TSS, uh BODs, and I'm uh, them are the big samples. The TSS, which is a mixed liquor that we, off the mixed liquor, which is our oxidation bench, we have to take a sample every week. And we have to have at least four samples in a five, five week period. Anyway, so if a week, if a month's got five weeks in it, we, as long as we got four, we're good. Anyways, but what's going on, where UPS everyone on, I packaged samples, uh you know, have them in the fridge, ready to go. You know, so she would drop them off and what would happen, the mail, it might be on trucking, might be sitting for two or three days. Uh, I know one sample we failed on, it came back, well, it came back delinquent. And it was because it was over its time. And then I had to hurry up and take another sample. Well, then I, it basically delinquent me for my DNR and my EPA status, which I had to contact them, tell them what was going on, once they understood. Uh, got a slap on the wrist and they were like, okay, you know, and all that happened again.
But that one's only every three months, right?
That one's for every three months. The one is for weekly, I'm sure that I can send it out and it don't matter on time, cause all they're doing is doing the TSS. So basically it's total suspended solids. They're taking it out of the bottle, they're putting it on, you know, your um filters, drawing it out and they're weighing it. And whatever's in that bottle's gonna be the same no matter if it is today or tomorrow or two weeks from now.
Frank, how does that affect uh April's schedule? Cause that's what we're talking about, her door schedule. That once a month thing or whenever it is, does she work it in between the seven thirty in the morning and the nine thirty when she gets back?
She can on that very day.
And then she can keep the hours, as long as she work within those hours, it's her.
So, so depending better on that on Wednesdays, and I'm just saying this because I know how the lab works down there. So I like to try to get the big samples out at least on a Wednesday and get them shipped to them, because that's a five day process and they have to be on the BODs. And anyways, if they, if it catches on a weekend, they have to come in and read, we get charged like an extra two hundred bucks.
Yeah.
And I don't want that, you know, so I try to keep it into the week, you know, so.
I think that's something we could work out, even if it's not April taking it, it could be someone else.
Why aren't we looking busy and then shipping it? It don't matter on TSSs and save money.
Yeah. There used to be a courier between uh these little towns out here from St. Genevieve to uh to Perryville and from Perryville to Jackson.
And that, and that there, that is back T-same.
Is that what that is?
That's what goes to the health department and we got a carrier that picks them up and takes them to Jefferson City. And there, and which, that's one sample a month too, that's water. She takes to the health department for me, cause I take it in the morning and then she takes to the health department. Anyways, up in St. Genevieve. Cause it's gotta be there by noon. Anyway, it used to be ten o'clock, but it's gotta do that by noon now.
So what we're trying to do for our citizens, St. Mary's, to let them know when our clerk is in, know when our collector's in. Now, we know that you're working seven thirty to four PM on Thursdays. But we, we know that you're not in the office until nine thirty.
Well, if we're gonna start shipping it, then it'll be back two, good morning, so.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes. Let's back up to Tuesday. I'm sorry, I missed, I checked out on Tuesday before, February the fourth, but you're here and you're open at seven thirty in the morning, right?
Mm-hmm.
On Tuesdays? So let's put seven thirty down there and that's seven thirty to three PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm here at seven thirty every night.
And so so, so in, in my conversation that we have, we had a nice open conversation about how important it is to have office hours and have somebody here when people come. It's because they don't know who's on the clock and who's off the clock and who's supposed to be here. They're just expecting to have somebody here when we say they're here. And so that's why I was telling April, April, we want you to set your hours that are comfortable for you to be here, but you need to be here those hours. So we need to work around whatever we decide tonight, because they're gonna be posted from now on and we have to discuss it. So right now we've got Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday set. So what happens Friday?
Fridays, I, oh, I mean, I'm here at seven thirty, so seven thirty to three. And then um every other week I do uh paperwork for, I mean, well, on Thursdays, actually, I'm sorry. On Thursdays, every other week I do the um bi-weekly paychecks and then um on our meeting days, uh after the meeting, I, on that Thursday or whatever day it is, I type up the meeting minutes and then and then I, I'll have to email those out and everything else, so.
Well, what we discussed in our meeting was how important it is to pay bills on time and a particular time every month. So you receive bills and you hold them until a particular time and then you pay bills and they go out. So the checks in the mail. In other words, if you get a bill after the thirteenth, that's gonna go in until the next month. And you collect some data from the thirteenth to the thirteenth. So uh because the mayor and some of this last conversation we had last meeting was, when are our bills getting paid? Uh, and somebody had brought up the fact that we should be making our deposits every time you get money, you should make a deposit. Well, that's impossible. That if we had a check coming in for thirty-five thousand dollars, I would get it to the bank as soon as possible. But as far as the water bills come in, you know they're gonna come in by the tenth and they would come in by the twentieth. So if you make just two deposits a month for water, which you're probably doing, that should be fine for us, right? Because the money's in there. But every time you need to go to the bank, uh we're not in the office. So what we're trying to do is, was regulate these hours of operation and say, okay, when she's doing the bills, let's not come in here and ask her if you have to do something else. Go read the meters or run deals, something else or get water, uh you know, air in the tires for a truck or something. Her job is to be here in City Hall working these hours. She's the clerk, she's the queen of the town. She has to be here. And so that's what the schedule is. And I thought that if we all looked at the amount of work that she does, you'd see there's a lot on their plate. And all we're asking her to do is be here specific hours and pay the bills on time, so that when we tell somebody the check's in the mail, they get it. And uh, and that's what she's done with this schedule. So I see that here on the, the thirteenth, for example, in February, you've got that, you know, um you've got to run sewer sample again. And then you've got the, uh, you know, the print the paychecks. You actually have, are our meetings still on Thursday now? Are we gonna be on Wednesdays or?
Well, they're changing with the accommodate, Dr. Dandudal, which he's with us right now. Zen, you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
So, so anyway, so, so you're preparing for the meeting on Wednesday now on Tuesdays, probably?
Yeah.
Okay, no big deal about that.
And then when our meeting's on Wednesdays, that Thursday, I type, I have to type up the meeting, the meeting minutes and that usually takes, I mean, sitting there, I'm not a fast, I'm not, I'm gonna say I'm not a fast typer, so I have to sit there and listen to it several times to get everything typed up like I'm supposed to, so.
So, so April, you feel comfortable with your Tuesday through Friday, seven thirty to three PM?
Can I say something about that?
Go ahead.
For people who are work.
I may uh interject.
Go ahead. I think we got, Kathy saying something.
Now Kathy, Kathy, uh, disperse, you need to go second dock, sorry.
Okay. I just wanna say, people that work, and I know you love coming in early, I'm an early bird, I get up at five. Um, people, cause I still reflect back to when we first started getting rentals and stuff. I had to take day off work to come in and getting them done. Four works for some people, some people work to five or six. So, and I'm not, ask me to stay here real quick. I don't know, maybe and, and I don't even know, maybe once a week or once a month, make it, I don't know if that would work that much.
That should be.
But make something later in the day, come in at noon, take the day off, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, but something that where people that work and get in here late in the day.
Is, is the best day of the week to work late? Be a Friday a payday? Like, I wanna get down here and get this bill paid, but she's closed at three.
Yeah, I would say. Friday's the weekend, that's it.
But uh I've gotta get down here because I've got my water bill due and it's payday today and it's Friday and, and the office is closed at three. So if we work some, you know, still work your regular, your hours, but work from twelve to six or, you know.
What would they even say?
Doc, what, what'd you have to say? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just interject, uh, this, I had mentioned this uh at the last, we had the work session uh and meetings prior to. If we had hours that were more consistent with normal business hours, which people get used to more easily and what I'm talking about is eight to four, nine to five or banking hours, uh then uh everyone just begins to intuitively know uh when they can go to take care of stuff, so. Uh, and the main thing is uh being consistently, apparently there are recent issues recently where people showed up and, and uh were wanting to pay their taxes or whatever. Uh didn't know where the clerk was. So then there was nothing posted on the door from what I understood. So just throwing in my two cents, I, I think it'd be a little bit better to be eight to four, nine to five or uh somewhere there and seven thirty's a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I don't think how many people, I don't think very many people are here at seven thirty in the morning. I know that myself, if I was a collector, sure would be a good time to get some work done, cause nobody's there at the, at the door. But I hear Kathy and I hear Zen saying that we need to be open more regular business hours uh than uh, you know, most of the week.
At least one day later, at least one day later.
Yeah.
And, but I mean, I'm just saying, cause I don't know, most people work until five, I would say.
And stick with it.
One day.
So everybody can know that.
Yeah.
A, a good day for that uh might be uh the Tuesday. Um, because you don't have any regular schedule to work on Tuesdays. You know, nine to five, something like that on Tuesdays. What do you think, April?
I don't know, it's just.
Yeah, this would be iron clad, posted and iron clad, so that just people get used to the pattern and know when they can go and pay and there's no exceptions.
Yeah, and the, and the mayor's letter going out April the first to our residents in St. Mary, that schedule's gonna be in that letter.
Yeah.
And that's all we need to agree on it tonight, so that we can um publish that and let people know that for sure, you know, we're gonna be here. But that was a good question for both of you, one was. But that was a good question for both of you, one was, uh, nine to four on Thursdays.
At least it's one day.
Doc, what do you think? If you'd be more efficient, you know, I agree with you on hours, but like the late on, uh, the weeks of our billing cycle? You know?
I would, you know, the, the banking, Ryan's right about, uh, it's inconvenient to drive ten miles to go to the bank, it's not like it's across the street. But the premise in my suggesting that is that I think every business should bank their money as quickly as possible. It cuts down the risk of loss, theft, et cetera. And, uh, so that's all I have to say about that.
I think the reason why we went with that two, two times a month is because we know that most of the bills will be in by the second, the second person, twentieth. But every time you go to the bank, the clerk is not in the office.
Absolutely right.
And the bank's a half hour round trip.
Yeah, I think in terms of mailings, uh, twice a month should be adequate, because that gives you time to calmly process, uh, bills and payments. And it's a little easier to keep track of your money if you're only doing it twice a month instead of, you know, spending something every day or writing cutting checks every day. The only exception would be crisis matters like equipment breakdowns, uh, or salt like we needed for this recent storm, our, uh, stockpiles had run low. That's all.
Yeah, and the, uh, the whole idea was, uh, when we, when April and I did talk, we were talking about the confusion we seem to have had about the clerk and her duties. And, uh, when she was here, when she was not here, when she's paying bills, when she's not paying, when she's collecting and not collecting. And the idea with this schedule, which I think April's done a great job with, is she's defined when she does this work now, so we all understand. So now we're matching, Zen, we're matching the hours with what work she has to do. And then we have to think about the citizens, like Kathy and you brought up, um, about a later, you know, at least once a week, you know, nine to five. And, uh, if we're gonna create a position that people can count on. And, uh, do we have to have seven thirty to three, April? Is there some reason? Yeah? Because we could do more than just one day, nine to five, we, we could do two days, nine to five, we could do, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, nine to five. And then there's a nine to four. And then there's a seven to three on Friday, early off.
Does that's deal with the T S S, so she don't, so lose any hours? Like sample wise, right, you know what I'm saying? Is she losing, gonna lose hours with T S S samples? Or how are you wanting to do that? Or are you wanting to bid it out and mail it, or what do we want to do?
Well, I think, I think for us in April, we would just.
If it's a dried sample, then you can mail it, or UPS it, or FedEx it, and it's gonna be less money than fuel and mileage and time.
And that's one less thing, that's one thing off your plate.
Yeah, if it could be checked.
Like I said, uh, yeah, Ian gets me, Ian gets me, you know, he gives me a call back, lets me know with the actual, with the mixed liquor T S S. If it doesn't matter how long it takes, we can send it out. My main, my main ones are, my big ones, quarterly's.
Definitely, so we don't.
Yeah, because, uh, that's the ones I have to report, month, or every three months, showing everything to get it, so.
All right, let's change Tuesday to nine to five, please.
And then the rest of the week is okay, seven thirty to three?
Seven thirty to three, uh, Wednesday is cool, I think Zen's got a point, we're getting closer to regular, uh, banking hours. But we do have two days a week now where she's here at nine o'clock until four and then nine o'clock until five. But on the two, on the Thursday, that's the sample run, so she's actually here at seven thirty picking the samples.
If we're gonna, if, if, if we're going to get mail it in, we don't need to do the sample run, right?
Difficult.
Yeah.
But, uh, but anyway, the hours that will be posted right now are nine thirty to seven to four P M., even though she might be in the office at seven thirty, how's that?
Say that again.
On Thursday, we, uh, we had brought her in at nine thirty because she'd be running the samples to Jackson.
But.
We haven't done that yet, we don't know if that's done, so right now let's leave it at nine thirty to four P M.
I see what you're saying.
And then if that starts happening, we can change that.
Okay.
To nine to five.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
So almost two, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays about nine to five, Wednesdays at early, seven thirty to three P M., and then Friday, eight, seven thirty to three P M.
And then when you get that nailed down, then she'll go back to seven thirty.
Yeah.
On Thursdays.
Yeah, and the, um, the, like I said, um, our feeling about this is that the clerk and the collector's positions are very important positions. And the absence of board members and the mayor being in the office, the only person that's here is the clerk. And we have to have this manager here, this officer, this bonded officer, and that's the city clerk. And that responsibility is, is more than just, you know, it's not a secretarial job here, it's a management job, it's, you know, getting the part that you need or, you know, being here to, you know, to function as an office, so. But I hope that our, our conversation was a good conversation and I hope that y'all, uh, can agree before the night's over on these hours. Does anybody wanna see any kind of more changes to it? Do you have any more?
Brian, one more thing, between us, so I have to take a back tea, water back tea sample every month. And it could accommodate anytime between the first, first of the month to almost the end of the month that I get the sample. I normally try to take it towards the first of the month, that way if something does happen and I have to do, you know, a repeat or something like that, I can still get it out at the same month. Normally that's a Monday through a Wednesday, but, uh, the carrier, you know, we'll get them, take them to the carrier, you know, the health department and then they go.
Second gen.
Yeah, second gen. Now, it's gotta be there by noon, now, I don't have a problem, you know, I, normally when I take it in the morning, it's before she's even here. And I pack it up and I set it on her window seal there, so that way when she comes in, she knows it's there. But, I mean, you know, if somebody else wants to run it up there, but as long as it's there by noon. Because I mean, I don't have the time, I can take the sample in the morning, I just don't have the time to run it to them.
And that doesn't work out on a Thursday for us, where we already have her running things, seven thirty to?
Thursday would not actually work, uh, I try to, try to get that sample Wednesday, so that way it hits that lab in Jefferson City to take the sample and it's done.
Well, maybe we should change that date to Wednesday then, that she works from seven thirty.
And that's totally left up to her, I mean, how you guys and her, you know, her schedule.
We wonder in the office, so, uh, and that's what this exercise is about. So if you've got to have this sample someplace on Wednesday and she's gonna be gone delivering it, then we need to change that schedule.
Any other, any other thing I will let you know too on this, I can take it on Monday, I can take it on Tuesday, take it on Wednesday. And that's where, if the weather's permitting, if we got rain in forecast on Monday, or on Wednesday, I'm gonna back up a day and I'm gonna take that sample, because with rain in the minute, we're gonna have a bad back tea and I don't want that, you know, so. But I gotta look at the weather forecast and what it's doing too, so, I mean.
Well, we're, we're gonna have a set schedule.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna have to make exceptions as a sub exception.
And again, any other things you could do too, and just say this, I mean, if you put it down, she's here nine to five. She puts a note on the door saying, be back in twenty-five, twenty minutes, you know, I had to run back these days. At least they know, hey, come back in twenty minutes.
Uh, we're trying to get away from that, and because we've had that.
Well, technically, there's been issues, if you would have a collector still and not just a clerk.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can adjust those hours on those days, uh, from, from the Thursday to Wednesday.
I mean, because, because the clerk is the one who's doing, you know, the calling for you. And most time I call for the equipment, if I need equipment or repair, band or anything like that. If I need somebody to run and get them or whatever, you know, normally April will run up to Coromane and get them for me if I need them around here. The thing about it is, you got one person inside this office doing two jobs. And I mean, the thing about it is, is when you had the clerk and you had the collector booked, the collector collected the money, the clerk.
Frank, we know that, but what I'm saying is on Wednesday, there's no reason at all why we can't have her in at seven thirty to, uh, do errands outside the building, but have on the door, nine to four, so that she can run the samples on Wednesday or whatever it is that you need to have done. That's, that's what we're trying to do, we, we need to have her in the office every day.
But that's every three months, right? Your sample's every three months.
No, no, mostly water samples.
The back tea's every, every month.
Yeah. So, uh, but the, uh, the situation that, you know, Rose brought up was, um, have her, have her come in at seven thirty in the morning and do the errands or whatever has to be outside the building, but we're gonna post the hours that she's gonna be in. Because we don't wanna sign on the door saying, running samples, we'll be back. We don't, we want somebody to come here at nine thirty and know the clerk's gonna be here at nine thirty, so, but.
But the other question is, like that tea, whenever she does billing, she has to take them bills to the post office. The post office don't open up till eight, you know, so, I'm, I'm gonna just ask her on that, so.
And here, down here, it's ten.
Oh, ten.
She doesn't have to take bills to the post office, the mailman can pick them up.
Not here, they can't, they don't stop here.
So you're talking about the water bills?
Why don't we put them, why not? They stop everywhere else.
Yeah.
We don't have a mailbox.
We can put a mailbox up, but the other thing is, the, they don't, the post office, they don't order to drop those in, do they?
No, but I have a marked, post marked like locally, so they go out, so they don't go to ship to Saint Louis and get tore up in the mail or get lost in the mail and.
So we can work out dropping those in the drop logs at the post office if they know they're coming.
Yeah, because they get, like she says, same locally.
Yeah, that's, that's, nothing's changed there. So let's stay on the goal of trying to have hours on the door where people know the clerk is gonna be here, because that's the exercise that we're having here. So we've got Tuesday, nine to five, we've got Wednesday, seven thirty to three, with the exception of, of reading. And, uh, so do we make her hours, uh, seven thirty on Wednesdays until? Is she running samples on Wednesday? April, need some help here. On, uh, on Wednesdays, Frank is saying that once a month you have some things that you need to run someplace. So why don't we go ahead and make the hours that we post from the door, nine o'clock or something? If, if that day you don't want to run any errands, open the door at seven thirty and be here doing the bills or whatever. But, um, on the door, we can say that office hours for people coming in would be nine to four. Or nine to three, or whatever.
There's always your own decision, what you said, work out, totally, and like you said, and then we're, it's on our clash.
Yeah. So let's do this tonight, um, and get this behind us, because we are, we do have people that are, that are wondering. And myself, you know, I'm retired, I'm in the city, and when I come down here, it's inevitable that the office is closed. Because I'm up early and I'm coming down there, whatever, I'm here late, it's always closed. But, uh, I'm thinking about the person that's working, what they're getting here is that they have a whole void during the course of their day that they can't come here at all. So, um, so we need to think of the customer. So here we are on Tuesday, and Frank is bringing this up, that once a month they're gonna need to be able to run some, be out here. But we, we want you to have a post on the door saying you're here, so why don't we put on Wednesday that you're here from nine thirty A M. Until three P M. on the door. But actually, you're here at seven thirty to run that month-to-month sample, whenever it is, but you're here seven thirty anyway. But we're just posting your hours so people will know you're here for sure, so they don't show up the day that you're running a sample. Right? Nine thirty to, uh, three P M. And then we've already got the Thursday, but we're, we're gonna leave it right now Thursday, because we, we don't know if we're gonna be running the samples very long or not, but right now, you feel about it? And then on Friday, we've got nine, seven thirty to three P M.
Doc, you have any input or?
Uh, well, uh, April mentioned, uh, something about the postal service chewing up mail. Uh, and though that happens, I think we've all had that happen, it doesn't really happen that much, it's pretty rare that I get destroyed mail in a year, you know, maybe once. So, uh, if we, should probably have a communication with the post office and see if we could have them stop by and pick it up, to what they do in so many other cities. Where they have post office, uh, post, postal box, mailbox routes, and then they have stop-ins, you know? Technically, they don't do that in a business, and we are a business, so.
And Saint Genitiv will do that for us, the Saint Genitiv post office, will put a box in.
Yes, so I don't know, maybe we could discuss that with the postmaster and see if they can make arrangements for their postal worker to pop in and pick up mail and drop off at our place.
Yeah, on their way down to the post office to pick up mail out of the box down there, or whatever. Um, but, uh, but did you agree what we have for the hours of operation now? We, on Tuesdays, we've got a nine to five schedule, on Wednesdays, we've got a seven thirty to three P M. schedule. But two hours is not posted, we have nine thirty to three P M. posted, but April's here at seven thirty in the morning. Because she might have to run this sample. And then on Thursday, we've got the same thing, she's here at seven thirty in the morning to run samples or whatever she needs to do right now, but the office will post nine thirty to four P M. on Thursdays. And then on Fridays, it'd be seven thirty to three.
For how many hours do you, are you working now? We don't wanna cut the hours.
No, I hope we have.
Because these times that we have written down, she's gonna have to have a break, kind of a half hour break here for lunch.
Yeah, that's her policy.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Can I plant something on the sewer sample? I know you take the water samples to Saint Jen, it's no big deal. But the sewer samples require the municipality to drive to wherever and bring it on a timely basis, et cetera. But if we, you know, if we're gonna get this financial burden, then we're not alone, there's other municipalities, whether it's Azora or, uh, Willsdale, Saint Jen, Farmington, and we could network all together and say, okay, we'll take it in this month, you just give it to us and we'll take it in. And then the next month, someone else can do it, you know, so it rotates, so it kind of shares, uh, responsibility and you don't have everybody paying gas and mileage and.
That's something that could be discussed. What, what I'd like to see us do now though, Frank, is to agree on these hours and Kathy just brought this up, what about lunch? So, uh, do you clock out for lunch, April? Do you take an hour for lunch? Do you take a half hour for lunch? So on Tuesday, we're gonna work from nine A M. until what, twelve noon for lunch? And then you're, so you're going from twelve noon to twelve thirty, so we're gonna put lunch. And then from one P M. until five P M., you're back in the office, right?
I'll be from twelve thirty to five.
Twelve thirty, yeah. If you only give her a half hour, it'd be twelve thirty to five.
But how many hours are we doing normally working, sort of getting up?
Thirty-four.
It's right now only at twenty-seven and a half. And that's not including the lunch, Frank, so.
Yeah, let's remember, yeah.
We've cut our hours.
Yeah, let's look at this and make sure that we don't do that. But, um, and that's because we've just been talking about so many things, but what, what does, what does Tuesday equal out to? The nine to five minus lunch gives us seven point five hours? Right? Okay, so let's just do it this way first, and then on Wednesday, we're gonna do a seven thirty in the morning until three P M. But we're gonna have a lunch at twelve o'clock to twelve thirty. And then back in the office at one P M. And then one to three P M.
If she's going to lunch at twelve and coming back at twelve thirty, why would you put down the office back open at one? Be twelve thirty. Be twelve thirty.
I don't know why I'm doing that. Help, yeah, somebody help me. Uh, I don't know either, but anyway, yeah, I'm thinking one and a half, a half hour. Okay, so, twelve thirty, all right. So twelve thirty to three, that equals how many hours then? So we've got seven point five hours on, on Wednesday? Yeah, she said she wants a half hour.
Then we put zero thirty, right? Seven and a half, can you hear?
So seven, so seven thirty in the morning on Wednesday.
I understand.
Thirty-two to thirty-four hours.
Right now, I've got the seven point five hours for each day, Tuesday and Wednesday. What do you all have?
I don't know, we don't make that.
Okay, so just Wednesday...
So we're still cutting her every lunch, yeah, each day.
Are we paying for her lunch? Did she clock out?
I believe they pay lunch, isn't it?
So it's actually seven thirty, so it's another two.
Most of the time, I don't think she changes.
Most, yeah, most times she has to take the lunch, but it is.
But that's, that's...
Don't think much is paid unless it's a call.
Right, but what we want on the door is that she's not here for a half hour even though she's here. She'd be closing the door.
And we do that with the thirty. And we still got, I mean, that's seven and a half each day, whichever way you put it.
Yeah, so...
That's thirty hours. And then that's, is that gonna time crunch her or whatever thing going on?
And right now, you're three, four hours?
Thirty-two to thirty-four.
Okay, well, um, do you have a problem with three hours? Do you wanna go ahead and come in a little bit earlier on Sundays?
You say Sunday?
Yeah. No, not, not any other, just a, a longer day or a longer break during the day, like for example, a split day. You know, but, um... Um, we had a long discussion about this hour conversation before we had this meeting. So, uh, this is not news. And, um...
It's not... Oh, was you saying that it's not?
And the whole idea was to try to do for the board, for the citizens of St. Mary's, a posted work schedule. But nobody's hours are getting cut.
No, but, no, I mean, unfortunately, we were unintentionally.
Yeah, I'm saying that on a particular day, like a day that was short, she could work a split day where it would be four and a half hours in the morning and, you know, four and a half hours in the evening or something like that, where she could be offered two or three hours in the daytime, you know, and do something to get that three, three hours or whatever.
Our goal is just to have her in the office, getting as much done as she can possibly get done, plus kind of being there for the people.
Right.
That's the whole goal.
It is. And like I said, the, that's, why have we ever closed on Mondays anyways? I mean...
I don't know.
That started with Bob Barlow's.
That's been a hundred years ago.
He wanted time off, he was trying to retire. He asked the board, we, we agreed. He had Mondays off, and then it continued from there. And when Barlow's left, Brian had it, and then Hacker, et cetera. It just stuck there. Monday was closed. But it was only done for Bob Barlow, so it's by the board's time.
Well, I mean, the first hours are set by the board. I mean, I think Mondays, if she's short hours, well, couldn't she, shouldn't she do the administration? Like you said, split.
Yes.
On Monday?
Or just do a half day on Monday?
Yeah, or something like that.
Just make it six extra days.
Especially, you know, I don't even know where she is right now, because we don't have none.
Okay, can we shut the meeting down for a minute till she comes back? I mean, I'm not wanting to close the session, I just don't know.
All right, let's have a motion to recess. Is there a second motion?
I'll make a motion to recess.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion made second, all favor.
Alright.
Any votes? Alright.
Let's take a little break here. So, we're back in the middle of the narrative.
Motion to reconvene.
I'll make a motion to reconvene, is me?
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made second, all favor.
Aye, aye.
And, true. Alright, Doc, for reconvene.
Okay, where we left off, if we were at thirty hours a week, we're looking at getting thirty-four hours in there. We have four days of work right now on the schedule. Are we working a half a day on Mondays or a half a day on... That would be the only day to be able to work four hours. Or are we gonna split that extra hour during the course of those four days? Put an hour on each day to make it thirty-four.
April, what would you...
I would prefer is just split it up on...
On the four days?
On the four days.
Keep Monday saved, okay.
So, let's get our calendar out, get a fair calendar here. So, do you, anybody got a new calendar or tell me which?
I can gladly have one.
So I'm just gonna go to the top where we have a blank space up here.
Got it.
And we're gonna go for Tuesday. So Tuesday... I already misplaced mine, please. Tuesday was...
Nine to five.
Nine to five, I probably did it right. Put a nine to five, oh, we'll put a nine to five. Okay, it's nine to five, but you have one half hour lunch, right? So are we going to make that nine to five thirty, nine to six?
Can I make it eight to five?
Eight to five sounds good.
Let's do eight to five.
And that stills with a half hour lunch to be posted. Then on Wednesday, what do we have? Oh, here we go. Wednesday was, we were gonna go with seven thirty on Wednesday morning. Right? And this is gonna be out of the office Wednesday morning, or is this...
Yeah.
Okay, so from seven thirty to nine thirty, you're on the schedule, but you're out of the office running samples right now, right?
No, not on Wednesday, that's one, one some month. Once a month.
Once a month, that's the back tea sample. So it'll only be one day that I'll be running that back tea sample to the health department.
So on that day, are we gonna post, if that, those are Wednesdays, right?
Yeah, because you said on the door you wanted to post.
Yeah, here we go, I found mine. On the door, we're gonna post, uh, nine to three, right? But we're gonna, are we gonna make that four o'clock then to pick up that extra hour? So, seven thirty to nine thirty is your free time to do errands or whatever it is, run samples or whatever. But on the door, we're gonna say that you're here from nine thirty until four o'clock?
That's be seven, four, I'll do the other one, sure. Does that work for you, April, what do you want?
Hope that she's coming around here.
So we don't wanna be, uh...
Seven thirty to three thirty is eight hours.
Yeah, so if you'll afford, that would be eight and a half, so that would make a...
Pick the lunch up?
If you take the lunch out, you know, be eight. It, because she usually eats, you know, on her lunch breaks anyway.
So on the door, we're gonna post nine thirty to four PM with a half hour lunch? Okay, then on Thursday, we had a nine thirty to four?
Do I make it three? I'm gonna keep it straight.
What is it? We need to keep it straight or something like that, confusing and...
Yeah.
Like a restaurant, like a one-a-business.
It's Thursday.
You know?
So...
Eight to five is how many a day?
So Thursday could be eight to five?
Three to five is mine.
Right?
That's, that's eight and a half hours, it's eight to five.
And that'll give you, that's four days. That would give you an extra half hour, correct? So that'd give you two extra hours.
So it would be thirty-two hours.
So, but when you do it that way, you're basing it on not running the samples, correct?
That'd be basing it if we didn't run the samples.
Yeah, and so...
We should post this, yeah, till we get that.
So we have Thursday that runs the sewer samples that we have on your schedule here.
Yeah, but if we get that change minute, I don't have to, I don't have to.
We'll be just on posters from the door right away.
Okay. So, so Thursday will be eight to five then, for the half hour break? Right? Right now. And if she starts running, if she has to run the samples, then we'll have to change that on the doors to nine o'clock because she's gonna be coming in at seven thirty in the morning and having that free time from seven thirty to nine thirty. But right now, you don't wanna post that right now, you wanna go ahead and post the nine, eight to five for Thursday?
So you're gonna have two, two days, and Tuesdays and Thursdays should be late days? So...
Yeah, because she's wanting to pick up the extra hour.
And she got it coming early, I know you got it.
We can tweak that till we have this last day in here. Let's do Friday here. So Friday was seven thirty AM to three PM, that's basically where she's been working now, right? For the one half hour lunch. Can somebody calculate those hours up? Can you do that, April?
What, seven thirty to three?
Yeah.
That's seven and a half hours.
That's seven and a half.
You make both of them seven thirty to three. Is that an hour or...
That's, what's that, that's fourteen, it's fifteen hours there. Fifteen, sixteen hours, so like, uh...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one and a half hours, it's like thirty-one and a half hours.
Sixty-seven and a half, alright. Bring back the thirty, mostly fifty, thirty-two, thirty-four. Where do we want to keep it around?
Well, on, uh, on the days that you do the board meetings and stuff like that, you're getting paid hourly, right?
Yeah.
Well, why don't we not worry about this extra hour?
Then that's mine, yeah, this is...
She's gonna do it during the meetings anyway, right?
She'll gain it over a period of months, yeah.
Yeah. So...
But it's, okay, so if it's thirty-one and a half hours, we won't leave it down?
Leave it that way.
But right now, she's getting, what, you said thirty-three?
Yeah.
Thirty-two to thirty, thirty-two to thirty-four.
And is that including with the board doing the hours of the meetings and stuff like that? No, so that's just basically thirty-three hours a week.
Yeah, so if we're here at thirty-one and thirty-two, it's close enough because we'll have the meetings come too. And, um... But in order to keep your days shorter... So I have here, um, eight to five is eight hours, right? So that's seven point five for Tuesday.
So that's a half hour.
Well, that's because of the half hour lunch. And then Wednesday, we've taken out the, um... We were gonna do it seven thirty.
No, that's eight and a half hours on Tuesday.
Tuesday's...
Oh, that's, is, one, ten, eleven, twelve, one, two.
Eight to five is eight and a half.
Okay, so eight and a half, so then it'll only be eight hours then, because it's half an hour, um, for lunch. It's gonna be eight hours, no.
No.
It would be eight and a half. Oh, eight and a half, I was just...
Because eight to five is nine hours.
Yeah, it's nine to five would be eight.
Right now, that's eight and a half.
Okay, so because we don't have to, um...
That's actually gonna be seven.
We don't have to have Crystal in at eight o'clock, we could do nine. The thing is, do we run into overtime when we're going, um, eight point five or nine hours? Are you paying, being paid overtime for nine hours?
It could be actually ten hours.
And they can make it three. You know what I'm saying? Just don't let it make it more.
Okay, yeah, different place. Because on Wednesdays, Brian, she would be actually getting ten hours, because I was just looking at what was being posted. She's actually gonna get paid for the ten hours on Wednesday, on seven thirty. Uh, she and I didn't write that down that way, that's why. So it's gonna be, there's the new movies to be in your house, so it's...
But can I make that two-three, she gets that as...
Or, I mean, I don't know. So we could do, um... How long would that take away from that? It'd be about a half an hour?
One hour.
What, an hour here? Also, that's, you're ninety, you're ninety-nine hours. Okay, so then that's what, ninety, and eighty, so you're gonna have eighteen, um, twenty-five, and, uh, that would be thirty-three and a half an hour. Yeah, seven thirty-three should be seven, like seven thirty. Either one, it can be one thirty, one thirty-one, thirty-one, two, thirty. You can have any seven, one hundred and ninety. So from seven thirty, I'm gonna say seven thirty, that's three to thirty.
Sure, probably.
Okay, yeah. It's gonna be two, three, twelve, three, one, thirty, two, thirty. Yeah, seven hours.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fifteen and a half.
How much time, how much time is she taking for this hour and a half, if you're gonna take the sample?
We're doing the sample thing right now, Larry.
I'm just, yeah, that's because...
So if we just send them in, like the...
You just give nine to five across the board and she comes in early, seven hours, admin, and just...
That's probably what we're gonna do, that they finish their exercise here. I've kept that basically here.
I think that's gonna work more better, and that's the best time to gain her hours back. If she still has to work, wants to go up there and still have an administrative... To do what she needs to do, but... She'll still be getting a break, gain her hours.
Yeah.
Now, like the hour and hour, a week that keeps up, then, coming up on the bikes and the kids for the, um, the meetings, that's kinda extra right now, if you take that with...
Oh, you have this one. Yeah.
I would keep that one for you, like her.
Oh.
You're not gaining as early as the others. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because we're not really, we're not gaining anything, like, if we take... Because right now, she's getting extra, unless you say it's her tour on Wednesdays and Fridays. She's getting extra when she comes in and does the meetings.
Sorry.
Right? On top of her thirty-three hours a week. But if we wouldn't change it like this without adjusting some time, she's only gonna get three and a half hours a week.
That's what I figured, nine to five and an administration coming early and then that meeting will count for the rest.
Uh, the mayor's made a point that after all this exercise we just went through, that a nine to five, four days a week...
Yeah.
Would give her hours, it would give her gore coverage, and it would be less of just slopping around. Much more dependable, much more bank-like, like you, you're saying, or business hours-like.
Yeah. It, it, you know, it doesn't, I mean, I'm exaggerating, but it doesn't have, it's not like the, you know, like Taco Bell or anything like that. But a consistent hour thing, you know? Nine to four, ten to five, eight to four, you know, whatever it is, just so that it's consistent. And it's a good PR thing, and then, and it's also serves the community because, I mean, a lot of people don't complain, but they still complain fairly routinely and... You know, one could say that regardless, someone's always gonna complain any time anyway. But, uh, we could help ourselves, in the city, and our residents, by just, you know, having regular hours and, and, uh... And it's, you know, it's like cutting stone. And that way, it removes any argument from anyone. And more importantly, to get, to have access to whatever they need to do to keep happy, you know, the city.
Well, they could come in later on at eight o'clock and, and, uh... What did you end up with down there on the last time we calculated?
Thirty-one and a half hours, but if you're talking nine to five, four days a week, that's only thirty hours.
Yeah.
And we're cutting her now, then we're not cutting her three hours off.
But if you add in the hours for the meeting and then you add in, also if she come in at, that would be posted hours, nine to five. Um, but the other days you run samples, that's two hours, thankfully.
Right.
That'll all add up.
But we're looking at it as in she...
Oh, she's not doing nothing, so...
So she won't have to do any of that.
And she'll come in administratively, to get caught up like, I mean, at seven.
Well, like I said, like you said originally, we could do the nine to five be on the door, but we know that she sure seven thirty to, to nine, uh, on these particular days to do errands or to, you know, whatever she wants, samples or whatever.
And that's...
And that would give her those extra hours on those particular days. We just wanna know when those will be. And right now, it looks like it's gonna be a Thursday, uh, most likely, if you do have to run samples.
Nine to five, if it was that, that's four days a week, isn't it?
Four days a week, no, four days.
Oh, oh.
I just want her hours to be, to be out of that, but a week, that's not her.
Oh, it, it won't be cut. I think that what we're gonna do is, we're talking about two different things here. Posting hours that she's gonna be here for the public, nine to five. And then on the, on the Wednesday, it'd be seven thirty to five. But, uh, but we know that she, she's not open for business. You're taking samples or doing whatever you need to do. And then she has the board meetings and stuff, and, um...
It's typically a, I'm gonna be from the board meeting. Wonder that, but I mean, but she's been averaging three, four hours.
Oh, yeah, since then, it's gone on for hours.
I know, but, um, but...
So we've gone through, everybody's had an idea about hours, and then I'm so glad that she came here at the end too because we need to vote on this and we need to, um, get this going because it's gonna go out to the public on April first. And we're gonna post it on the door by April the first, so, um...
Well, if you pass it today, why don't you do it, do it, why don't you mark it first?
Yeah, but the letter goes out the first day, so... So eight to five, Tuesday through Friday, three days off.
Wait, eight, eight to five, you said?
You said nine to five?
Nine to five.
I'm sorry. So it's nine to five.
Oh my God, there's so many numbers going on.
I know. That's my fault, we're sorry. Nine to five, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, off Saturday, off Sunday, off Monday, that's three days to be out and relax, April, have a great time, have a big day with the family. Go grocery shopping, all those fun things you have to do and draw. And, uh, but our citizens will have regular office hours too.
And then that can justify complaining to table order bill, that's what table be paid, and such and such, and all of the, the pieces, so.
And then just, um, like the hours that she does need to come in, just know that what the hours are that she's coming in.
Right, and so.
That's the person.
So April and I will do a regular work schedule, and when we have our next meeting, so that y'all will all know in your packet what our hours are here. And, uh, it'll be our schedules, and the posted schedule will be the one that's on the door, so you'll have two. But April, we have our next meeting, we can do that, put the schedule down.
And that'll kind of deal with?
Is this something you can work? Yeah, good. Alright, Kathy, do you wanna finalize this here, since you've got the numbers down there, or?
You guys have numbers.
Somebody.
As far as, the numbers as far as what, like hours?
Yeah, the Tuesday through Friday, we have nine to five.
So it's six, seven, maybe seven hours a day, so. Maybe, maybe hours posted.
Okay.
Thirty hours posted.
We need it, thirty hours posted. And we post it on the door starting March the first, we're gonna say that you're here at nine o'clock, that you're gonna take a twelve o'clock lunch, and you're gonna be back at twelve thirty.
March or April?
March. March. If we pass it tonight.
If we pass it tonight, it should start immediately, right?
There's a notice going out in the mail to the public, March, April the first, for about thirty-one hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
But.
But you can post it immediately.
Yes, immediately, yeah, that would be on the door, and, uh, I guess we've got our film now too, so.
Yeah. Well, yeah, let's, we're down here at the very bottom here, huh?
Yeah, okay. So, and part of that, let's just copy of our original, what I'm just gonna do, I just had a secondary case, we have needed a secondary to help her out. But it takes, what do you guys, we just spent an hour on, an hour, right? I have a quick question, yeah, but we're just like talking about hours and stuff like that, is there really a need to draft bills and ordinances about it? It's just. There's never been one, and had it, where we, you guys, your power to dictate in what's best for the public.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want it, I may, again, if that's you.
It's more like, it's more like policy.